Provided here that they have a sufficient answer or so could you confirm with me that that Corwin Park is happy with this? Yeah, going forward as is.
Yeah, they are. Um, there's still a few unknowns in terms of some of the individual parcels and acreages. But uh, the arm of Corwin Park has passed this amendment at their council table. And was uh, content with the response provided by Martin's with rational provided by Martin's.
Okay, thank you.
Is there any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Spence.
Okay, moving to a motion to accept administration reports, Council Julie.
I'll make the motion to accept and file administrative reports for June eight, twenty twenty as presented.
Do we have a second or for that? Counselor Jones? Any questions? Seen them all in favor? Thank you. Okay, moving down to mayor's report. This is pretty well just for your information. Uh, does anyone have any questions of what's on the report? As you can see, we spent Thursday and today um, presenting our. Our volunteer awards. I I would like to thank our city clerk, Don Johnson, for preparing a lot of these visits. And also our communications and administrative executive assistant Erin Leg. For all the work that she did putting notes together and helping along and assisting um. It turned out to be a very nice afternoon, even though, as you can see from some of the photos, very windy. But we've managed to miss the rain in every one of these visits, even though it's kind of sputtered around. Uh, in between the visits and today was actually a fairly nice day for doing it. Every, all the recipients were so humbled and grateful and thankful, so. Um, although it's not the way we would like to honor our volunteers, it was a wonderful afternoon and time well spent. Um. If no one has any questions in my report, can I have a motion to file? Counselor Beck?
Yes, I'd like to make the motion to accept and file the mayor's report for June eighth, twenty twenty as presented.
Do I have a second or? Counselor Peterson? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Okay, moving to uh, council round table, we're gonna start with Counselor Tully. Counselor Tully? Hello?
Apologies, I got, I I got put into a breakout room somehow.
Yeah, I was being put into a breakout room as well, so I just ignored it.
I'm not exactly sure how that happened. I went to press the unmute button and it flipped me over to that. Uh, I don't really have anything significant to report. Um, but I I do think we need to have a bit of a discussion just around the uh. Uh, the request from the Chamber of Commerce and 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 the their lease agreement and their space and their request to waive their. Uh, their lease for a timeframe. Uh, I don't know if this would be the best time to do that right now, but um, I think we we do need to move on. Uh, acknowledging that that's been requested and and get that done.
Yes, I think this uh, we can do that now. Um, do you have any, do you have a motion or anything that you'd like to put on the table? Counselor Tully?
Well, realistically, I think I might as well make the motion. Um, just give me two seconds. I want to get back into. Uh, the correspondence that we do have. Essentially, I guess I'll make the motion that we would look at waiving. Uh, the the lease fees uh, for the space that the Chamber, the Prairie Sky Chamber of Commerce. Uh, occupies for the months of April, May, June, and July, uh, as requested in their letter of April seventh, twenty twenty.
Okay. Um, do, do we want to work, uh, cause I know there was the other request for pro sport. We'll do that separately?
I think they'd be separate, yeah.
Okay, alright. Do I have a second or? Uh, Counsel Phil Chuck? Now, I'll open the floor for questions or comments. Counselor Shram?
Uh, just clarification, did you say May, June, July, August, or just April, May, June, July?
April, May, June, July.
Uh, so they would get a refund if they've already paid for April? Cause it is June.
I'd have to ask administration to uh, to speak to whether or not what what the situation is.
So you're virtually saying that they would get a four month um, uh, four month break on their lease?
That's what I'd be proposing, yes.
Okay. Counselor Beck?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spence. Um, uh, so I suppose with this year, I'm like, I would just have a question. I'd just like to know exactly what metrics that we're that we're using to determine, um, let's say eligibility for. Uh, for the uh, rent to not be applied for this situation. So, uh, cause I guess with this this year, I'm 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 at a just a slight loss in terms of. You know, uh, the city of Warman, we didn't uh, force the door closed um, uh, for this business. They had been able to uh, you know, you know, to let's say operate. Um, and with this year, the um, I mean, you know, certainly in their correspondence. You know, they have cited that that some of their incomes have have been affected. There hasn't been any proof or show of that other than uh, like the fact that the Winbackso might either be postponed. Um, might be canceled. Um, but you know, with this year, you know, like how the business operates is is really. Entirely different than than, let's say, like the rental, you know, uh, or the like lease fees for the space. Uh, which is, by the way, subsidized already by by the city of Warman. So so I guess with this year, I just want to understand the metric. Um, that we're using to determine that rent shouldn't apply for this.
Uh, Counselor Tully, did you want to talk to this or do you want to forward that on to administration?
I think that particular question would be a better question answered, uh, answer from administration.
Okay, do we have someone on the call that can weigh into this conversation? From administration?
Um, I don't believe there was any matrix used in regards to that, I think. In regards to the question of have they lost revenue or not revenue and the proving of that, I guess we were putting. Trust and faith in the discuss in what they put in the letter that uh, they have lost revenue as a result of not.
Yeah, uh, so if I could just respond to the information that's that's being provided here, so with this year, I mean, like there again. Uh, like where where I struggle with this, I mean, like there again, I I want to be able to help the chamber, I want to. You know, certainly show support as counsel, but you know, like also in the same breath, I have, you know, responsibility to our ratepayers. Um, you know, being that, you know, uh, you know, they have. Responsibility and faith in terms of us being stewards of of what's been going on. So I, I'm like, I do see this as being one of those, one of those things where. Um, you know, I mean, like obviously, like the situation hasn't hasn't exactly ended and it's it's one of those things where. It's it, it hasn't been fully demonstrated as to what our role and responsibility is to this. We know that as a municipality, um, you know, that that we do not, um, you know, say fall under the federal or or provincial. Um, uh, plans to, you know, to have any of our, you know, like incomes protected there also, so. So I guess with this year, I guess I just want to be sure as to. Um, you know, us realizing the fact that this is burning our warm and uh, tax base. For something that is a regional component and um, something where, you know, it hasn't fully been demonstrated as to. Their costs and whatnot. So, I guess I'll leave it.
Good points. Thank you, Counsel Beck. Counsel Phil Chuck? Uh, but we can't hear you.
Is it there? Hello?
Yeah, yeah, we're there.
I want to speak in favor of the motion and uh, I think there's a couple of things that come into play here. First of all, the chamber stepped up when, right at the beginning of of COVID nineteen and worked with the region. Including our city counselor, uh, Julie and and uh, and economic development officer Josh. Uh, Wells. So I think just taking a lead and really working to support our businesses to get back on track. And maybe save some businesses along the way was something that we really saw the benefit of having the chamber here active and doing a lot of those things. Tying it to the rent itself and looking at the four month timeline, I'm fine with the four months, I'm not fine if it continues on. So I think there has to be a an endpoint and it really is for them to get their feet under them and figure out. The new ways of doing things to be able to deal with their own financials along the way, so I think four months is fair. Uh, it's it it allows them to move forward. Uh, one last point is that they did not receive the tax benefit of other businesses. Because they do not pay tax because they're in a municipal building. So some of the benefits that we announced at the last meeting are not eligible for our chamber or for a pro sport. They are uh, they are, so so they didn't get that benefit. So I think this is leading them halfway. Uh, showing them, and and this has been on the table so long now. We were looking for them to see if they could get something federally, they can't because it's through a municipality. So their only option is to ask us for forgiveness on four months and I support the motion.
Okay. Any, uh, Counsel Peterson?
Um, I don't support the motion as is. I I would support giving them a four month break. But only as a deferral and with the with the basically that they would have till the end of their lease to pay it back. Um. Just because I I think, yes, the the time now, oh, they need to define, you know, define how they're gonna do these things. But I think after that, then it's up to them to, like Gary said, it's up to them to figure out how to recoup those revenues.
Okay.
And it's and it's also. It's also very much like what uh, what the businesses that they represent would be facing. Businesses aren't getting just four months forgiveness of of leases. It's it's almost universally, it's deferrals that they're getting. So I think that that would be fit in line with what they're representing.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Peterson. Any other comments before we, uh, Counseler Jones? You're on mute? Uh, still can't hear you, Brian.
We're getting feedback, Brian.
You can go into the chat, I guess. Okay. Um, is there, Counsel Shram?
Um, I was wondering how much money uh, does the city uh. Sponsor the chamber in their event at Wabexa? And um, why I'm asking that is uh, you know, we seem to be maybe hung up on the amount. And uh, I I think that under the circumstances, according to our medical officer. Uh, of Saskatchewan says that we probably won't have any big meetings uh, for another year. So to me, uh, uh, the four months uh. Evens out the ability to also uh, from our previous sponsorships. That we've had with the Bexa and I think uh, this would be maybe uh, that. Uh, olive branch or an ability for us to do uh, what we can for them at this time.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Beck, did you have something else?
Yeah, uh, you you know, there again, you know, just to build on on the points uh, put forward by, you know, by Trevor and also to sum up. Um, uh, Counsel Phil Chuck. And you know, certainly this year, like I'm not saying that the city doesn't provide any support whatsoever, you know, with this year, I'm like there again, I think, I think that there is a role for us. Um, here, um, I just don't know that showing it as rent uh, forgiveness is is the way to do it. I I do like what um, what uh, Counsel Peterson had put forward in terms of a deferral. Um, you know, to match what's what is happening out there for other uh, businesses. And you know, with this year like this, you know, I'm like, there might be an opportunity similar to what Counsel Shram had put forward. As a way where we can provide a subsidy or a grant in the future in recognition for the for the work that they have. You know, certainly provided for our businesses, but I don't know that it should be under the rent forgiveness aspect. I mean, if there again, if that's what council chooses, then you know, then so be it, but uh, with this year, I just think that there's a. That there might be another method for us to do it and provides, you know, let's say recognition for 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 them stepping up and and certainly helping through unprecedented times. So I respect all of the um, you know, the information being put forward and and there again, I'm I'm not trying to. Say that I do not appreciate the work that the Prairie Prairie Sky Chamber has done, but it's just that I think that there's, you know, uh, different opportunities.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Beck. Is there anyone else? Oh, Counselor Jones? Counselor Jones, you gonna try again?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, right on. Sorry about that. I left and came back, I guess it would. Um, I was gonna speak in favor of the motion, I. To me, when you think of our ratepayers and you raise a really good point, uh, Counselor Beck, and that, you know, our job is to. To help, you know, ensure that that there's confidence in the stewardship that we provide to their money. But I think also that the role that the chamber plays in our business community and the way that they did step up. And anything we could do to support them to further support the businesses we have in the community. And in this case, the opportunity cost us is so low. That if we, you know, but to them, it 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 probably is at this point in time with the lack of fundraising pretty substantial. Um, that I I would support it. I think the benefits of supporting them for four months are always with the opportunity cost of of. Our old library, a corner of our old library building, so. Um, I I would vote in favor of it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we've heard from everyone, so I am gonna call the question. I would ask you to hold your your hand so I can go through both my screens. So all in favor of the motion that's on the floor? Okay, I guess it is passed then. And. I can say opposed, I can see the, okay, thank you. Um, do we want to move ahead with the pro sport one? Because that one was kind of connected. I uh, I'm gonna go back to Counsel Tully because he's the one that put this one on the floor, Counsel Tully, do you want to do pro sport as well, their letter?
Just give me a brief moment to reread it again. I kind of lost track of it for a second.
I think they're looking for one month.
Well, they've got two different options in front of us. Uh, option number one is that they're requesting uh, one month to be of rent to be waived. With additional of four months of rent to be deferred and spread it over out over the remaining portion of their lease. Uh, option number two is that they were requesting one month of rent to be waived with an additional portion of. Four months of rent to be deferred, spread over the remaining portion of the lease. Uh, so they're asking for the month of. April, uh, because we were not able to operate, um, have that rent forgiven. Let's me. Sorry, just give me a brief second here. I just want to figure out what uh, was involved here.
Cause I do both sound, they're sound the same.
Yeah, there's just a slight difference. I think what I'll do, I'll put forward option number. Which is the request of one month of rent to be waived. So that would be for the uh, the month of April. And then with an additional four months of rents deferred and spread out over the remaining portion of the lease.
Okay, that's your motion?
Yes.
Do we have a second or? Counselor Philip Chuck? Now, welcome to the floor for comment? Are there any? Counselor, our Counsel Jones?
Um, so so this one, I I do have a bit of a different feeling and when I look at the role it played, we are business in the community and I. Recognize that they had some challenging, the challenging environment like it was for all businesses, I would be on side with a pure rent deferral. For the time that they've they've put forward, but not forgiving any of the rent that uh, that uh, that. Yes, I think that's a fair compromise and then if you do put that across the rest of their term, I think that that's a fair way for the city. You know, the investment we have in that facility, but also makes it very manageable for them, gives them some breathing room for when they need it. And when they get the ability back to pay it, that uh, they can pay it.
Okay, other comment? Oops, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's good. I just wanted to add, so four months of deferrals would I be?
Okay, well, uh, we're we're talking for against the 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 motion on the floor right now, so. Okay, any other comments? Counselor Philip Chuck?
I guess I would support this motion and and they're asking for one month. And one month being the time that they were forced to close by the provincial uh, or chief medical officer. So they're not asking for any other time beyond the one month and then deferral with the rest of it. So I think it was a fair request and I think it's something that uh, we we can move forward. Cause it's almost looking at some of the buildings or some of the businesses we have inside the legends. We've forgiven it because they had no access to their facility as. Pro sport did not have access for a period of time also, so I think it it's a fair request and uh. It allows them to move forward, that and it was well thought out.
Okay, Counsel Beck?
Yes, uh, thank you. Uh, and you know, uh, certainly with this year, I'm like, I definitely support the uh, you know, uh, you know. Like the details before there by Counsel Phil Chuck. Uh, with this year, I'm like, I do agree that uh, you know, that we did. Uh, close down that facility for uh, you know, uh, for a short period of time. And with this year, it certainly did have an effect on their business and with this year, I I look, I do support the one month uh, rent. Uh, forgiveness.
Okay, is there any other comments before we move to? Oh, Counsel Peterson?
Just a point of clarification, my understanding was that pro sport and. We uh, twenty-four hour uh, twenty-four seven fitness there. I I was under the impression that they both still had access, that but they were the only ones that still had access to their spaces.
Um, um, city manager Smith, can you talk to that?
Um, we as a, so when we. We we made the decision to, uh, we had, the province had indicated that we had to close our recreation facilities. So we didn't have any other choice but to um. Advise the people that didn't have access, outside access uh, to to close. Uh, the, on the other side, the uh, uh, pro sport. They were, they continued on for a while after and then the province, um, you know, declared uh. The state of urgency and um. Asked those businesses to close. Uh, so initially, they weren't um. Closed uh, as soon as the other ones is be, because they had an outside access, uh, but they were closed as a result of. The province, as Counsel Phil Chuck had indicated.
Counsel Peterson, follow up?
Yeah, so they weren't closed because we closed the building. They were closed because the province. The province uh, shut it down, so that that there's a difference there from ones on the inside, right? So they're not, it's not the same situation. Um, but I I would, I I don't support this motion as it is, but I would support one that was just a straight four month deferral.
Okay. Any other, any other comments? Okay, we're gonna move to the motion that's on the floor and that's uh, waiving the lease for one month, then four months. Or then of of the the rest be deferred, the next four months be deferred. So all in favor? Okay, opposed, receded. So it's carried. Okay, Counsel Tully, do you have anything else?
Nothing else for me at this time, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Jones?
Uh, only thing to report, a little bit about golf course, um. Had the first board meeting, formal board meeting, board meeting since COVID started at the end of May. Um. Some some interesting numbers, so often reporting back and you see through the meeting minutes that. Um, you know, the sport of golf was on a kind of downward trend, particularly through younger people and. Um, through COVID and the fact there's not a whole lot of other choices, they've seen the junior memberships go from sixty-nine to eighty-nine. Um, you know, be pretty early in the year, so it's actually been awesome to see if you go over there. Um, a lot of kids swinging golf clubs and playing golf, uh, to the point that they've started a junior league this year, so. You know, I think just, you know, you get those opportunities every once in a while to reintroduce people to a sport and for that golf course. You were really, really needing some young, um, some young golfers to take up an interest in the game to carry on the success of the course. So it's been really good to see, um, not the greatest, greatest circumstances, but it's great to see young kids out having a good time playing on the course, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Counsel Jones. Counsel Peterson?
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you. Counsel Beck?
Uh, thank you. Uh, with this year, um. I mean, with municipalities of Saskatchewan or Suma, uh, with this year, uh, the sub communities are just starting to get back to business. In terms of dealing with some of our agenda items, uh, we have a board meeting coming up here towards the end of June, so um, so we're gonna. Uh, see exactly what business that we can start to uh, start to deal with and uh, continue moving on best ways that we can for uh. For municipalities all across Saskatchewan here, so um, nothing specific at this particular time to uh, you know, to report back. Other than uh, things are just uh, starting to uh, zooming it back to normal here.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Shram?
Uh, I don't have much, uh, but I do want to say uh, a big thank you to the province uh, for opening up playgrounds. As a grandparent, I uh, I'm really happy about that. And uh, I'm glad that there is processes that the province is taking uh, with our COVID reopening. And um, I know it's not easy, but I I think it's uh, it's doable. And uh, it feels good that there is a little bit of hope as we walk through this. Uh, the second thing is uh, we did meet as a P four G uh, from last council to this council. Uh, it was our May meeting and uh, we had some interesting discussion and uh, it was uh, a little bit. Uh, we needed to work through some things, so if you wondered if it's all a bed of roses, it's sometimes it's not. We we do have to discuss things between communities and uh, and I think that um. Uh. Things like this is good when you have to work out the details and so. Uh, we're at meeting again on the seventeenth of June. And maybe Gary wants, I mean, Counsel Phil Chuck would like to uh, speak more about this, but uh, I think that uh, there is a. Uh, a plan on on the table that's gonna come and on in June and which we can move forward as P four G. And to see uh, the official community plan take place, there will be um, then. Uh, a a whole timetable of how we're gonna flush this out and have it on the table. Before uh, the provincial election, before our election. And uh, I think that uh, it's, it feels good to feel that we're accomplishing something in this last uh. In this last few months and uh, so as council, you will receive uh. Uh, a, in our next community, uh, uh, committee of the whole, you will get the full. Uh, official community plan, I think Brad, is that correct? The official uh. The official plan, the P four G community, uh. So if you can um, uh, help me out here, Brad, with that.
Yeah, you're 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 correct. Um, we're gonna be um, hopefully bringing uh, the executive summary. We're just waiting for a few last minute discussions, which we're having tomorrow afternoon and I'm hopefully gonna bring an executive summary with. Uh, a bit of a copy of the draft O C P to council uh, for information at this committee of the whole. If we don't quite get there, it will definitely be the next one, but I'm hoping that's fine.
So I just want to encourage council to please uh, read through that. There will be an executive summary that Brad will give, but it is crucial. Because as we walk through this, we need to know what it is that we're, that the community will also be facing. as we walk through this, we need to know what it is that we're, that the community will also be facing. And so we can answer questions should they come up, come about. So, uh, I just want to encourage council to take, uh, it's a long read. It'll be somewhat, uh, onerous, but I'm sure you'll get through it and be, uh, very informed through it. Um, so that's all I have, your worship. Um, I think that, uh, Counselor Philip Chuck can help me out with things I missed.
Okay, thank you. And I too am really happy about the playgrounds and probably just as happy about the beaches, so. Okay, Counselor Philip Chuck?
Oh, I agree. I was gonna mention the Warman Beach too, but, uh, glad you caught that. Just a little bit on school life, it, it goes on where our school timetable is almost done for next year. We are planning like it's a regular year, though, uh, we understand there'll be an announcement this week on how that'll look like. But, uh, also student timetables will be sent out. So lots of stuff still happening as we prepare for next year. P4G, I, I, I just want to mention too that, uh, we had a three hour meeting, over a three hour meeting last time. And, and there was very robust and synergistic conversations that really got us to a better place. And as, uh, as manager, uh, Toph mentioned, these things need to happen. They need to see the elected officials have that positional view where we can move towards that consensus. So we really need to talk our, speak our minds, get it out on the table, find a, find a better place, which is ultimately what we want to find the best practice for the whole region. So, well said there, uh, Counselor Shram, uh, in exciting times as we move forward with that and, uh, with a few of the roadblocks along the way. And just finally, a, a thank you to Mayor Spence with the awards. Uh, it's something that I know we had a meeting about and it, and it, the pictures show that it worked out better than we could have imagined. As far as something that, uh, something that, you know, we were afraid is canceled, but these people needed the recognition. They, they've done a lot and it was for the twenty nineteen year that we were recognizing them. So it's, it's recognizing them now, uh, and, and, and take time to thank them. Give them a call and thank them. It's, it's a lot of work to be recognized at this level. So I appreciate, uh, appreciate the pictures and the media and, and hopefully we get that out more. So thank you.
Counselor Shram?
Uh, just, we probably need to clarify about the pro playgrounds. What date is it exactly open? Uh, Manager Smith, could you help me out with that?
Uh, yeah, Counselor Shram, the, the announcement today was that they would be open on Friday. Uh, they haven't determined the, um, a lot of the, uh, criteria that we will have to, um, do in regards to sanitization, et cetera. But, um, yes, we will have been open, uh, for Friday.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. So we're gonna move down to correspondence. We have in front of us the RCMP media release. And we also have a proposal from the grad, uh, the, the proposal from the grad about the grad procession. So let's first go to the RCMP media release. Does anyone have any questions about that? Not seeing any hands. We'll move on to the proposed grad procession and we do have a proposal in front of us. And we also have a representative on the line if anybody needs any questions answered. So, um, so we have the proposal in front of us. Has everyone had the chance to go through that? Does anybody have any questions about the proposal? Seeing none, does, is anyone prepared to make a motion to Counselor Beck?
Uh, thank you, Mayor Spence. Um, I would like to make a motion based on the, um, on the correspondence that we have received. Um, so my motion would be for council to allow a street closure for grad possession, uh, procession on Thursday, June fifteenth, or fifteenth or twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty, along Pacific Avenue in celebration of Warman High School graduation ceremonies. And, um, and that they follow the protocols as presented in their correspondence.
Okay, um, do we have a secondary for that? Counselor Shram? Now, I'll open the floor to any questions. Does anybody have any questions? Counselor Tulley?
Uh, just a quick question. I, I noticed Counselor Philip Chuck, uh, left the room and, and we have to note that, um, uh, that I believe he is declaring just a conflict on this and he had to step out.
City Clerk Johnson?
Yeah, we should have had a note that he had a conflict of interest and stepped out, um, due to his position at the school.
Thanks, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, is there any other questions about the proposal in front of us or the motion, I should say? Counselor Beck?
Yeah, um, I guess, uh, two things that I'd just like to point out, um, with this year, uh, um, uh, just to be clear, like the date there is June twenty-fifth, not fifteenth, that I first stated. Also with this year, I just wanted to make it known that if this does pass and whatnot. But obviously with this year, this group would actually have to go out and let's say, reach out to the RCMP and, and to the fire, you know, department if they're looking to have, um, you know, let's say, you know, uh, those organizations involved in this. Obviously, we don't direct those. Um, it would be up to them to, uh, you know, you know, to, uh, you know, to look after those particular arrangements. So I guess I have a question on the time, uh, with this year, did note six thirty or seven. Um, I'm, I'm just wondering if we can maybe just block off, uh, let's say sixty minutes, um, you, you know, let's say whatever they would, um, require, uh, for this, uh, you know, for this, uh, procession to take place.
Okay, so I guess maybe probably the best thing to do is for, if the motion passes, is for the parent committee that, that is, um, arranging this to get in contact with City Hall so that they can make those arrangements with Public Works. Would that be the process to go, City Manager Smith?
Uh, yeah, so the, the intent is the Public Works will be, uh, putting up barricades then, is that part of the request?
The probable, they probably would have to on the, the busy streets. We're talking about sixty to eighty cars, so. Uh, at least at six thirty, it's after the rush hour, but I think we, it's like any other sort of parade. I think you would kind of need something there on the busy, on the, on those busy streets. So would they be able to reach out to you to make any sort of arrangements that, that you deem necessary?
Uh, they, they certainly, they certainly can. It may be a, a matter of us supplying the, um,
The barricades?
Barricades and they, they put them up, but we can have that discussion with them.
Okay, all right. Okay, sounds good. Uh, is there any other questions? Seeing none? All in favor? Okay, thank you. Um, so City, uh, City Clerk Johnson, can you maybe let the parent groups, the parent group organizers know exactly what's, uh, what they need to do from this point on?
Absolutely. I'll reach out to them via email and, and a phone call and let them know.
Okay, and now if I can have a motion to file correspondence, Counselor Tulley?
Motion that the RCMP made twenty twenty media release and the letter from Warman High School twenty twenty graduation committee were received by council on Monday, June twenty, June eighth, twenty twenty. Uh, correspondence is to be filed as presented.
Okay, do we have a secondary for that? Counselor Peterson, any further discussion? Y'all in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down to other reports, we have the turbidity report. Would someone be able to make that motion to file it? Counselor Shram?
I move that the May twenty twenty turbidity report be accepted by council on June eighth, twenty twenty and is to be filed as presented.
Secondary please. Counselor Philip Chuck? All in favor? Or first, is there any questions about it? Okay, all in favor?
Wait a minute, I, I have a question.
Oh, sorry, Counselor Shram?
Manager Bob Smith, I, um, as I was looking at the turbidity report, I noticed that, and probably we've, uh, mentioned this before, um, but between the two, uh, the two plants, uh, I noticed that the, the gallons per minute are, uh, quite a bit, or the pressure is, is different. Also, the, the chlorine is different. Uh, is there, is there a reason for that? I guess the line pressure is different. Uh, maybe that's, you probably need to manage Public Works manager for that. But, uh, I just have the questions for those two.
Yeah, yeah, the, I mean, it's two separate plants. So you may have a bit of a fluctuation between the, um, uh, you know, the turbidity and chlorine levels between each plant. It won't, it won't show the exact same, uh, also the timing of which the, uh, which it's taken. Uh, in regards to the, to the pressure, um, he very confusing that sixty, uh, pounds.
And, and three hundred and sixty-five, I, I just, it's kind of a, a big difference there and I was just curious what that was.
Yeah, I'm not sure how the reading is for the, uh, the line pressure, what, what it's at at the five, but I'll check into that.
Okay, I, I just noticed that chlorine was also up at the old one and I, I was just wondering if that was the, because it's the old one and, I mean, it's not a big deal. It's well within safe.
Counselor Shram, if I could just jump in for a second, um, uh, I'm unsure of the pressure one as well, but I do know that the turbidity and chlorine in the old plant, uh, the results are sometimes higher just because, uh, of the mountain use the old reservoir, the water doesn't get turned, turned over quite as much as the new reservoir. But we'll have to get back to on the pressure one.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Moving down to the accounts, motion please? Uh, Counselor Peterson?
I'd like to make the motion to approve city accounts as presented by checks numbered twenty-three zero one eight to twenty-three one seventeen, the total amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents. And the payroll vouchers numbered ten seven eighteen to ten seven sixty-one in the amount of seventy-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-six dollars and sixteen cents for June eighth, twenty twenty.
Secondary please? Counselor Beck, any questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay, thank you. Well, that leads us right down to motion to adjourn. Motion please? Counselor Jones?
Make the motion to adjourn the Monday, June eighth, twenty twenty, regular meeting of council.
Secondary, Counselor Tulley? All in favor? Okay, this meeting stands adjourned.